...president here, the new chief is here, the state senator. We're happy to hear from anyone. Both liberty council. This is for governmental entities. It's an input from governmental entities. There is a I will input from the public and then next week also.
Did anybody, is there anybody in attendance from the university? I guess I don't see anybody because I don't know who they are. It appears so.
Well, people from Liberty. I've shown you into it.
Good.
Sorry. It's probably not a good idea to get the new chief on the wrong side.
Well, hello everybody. I'm Amy Sainz, and I'm with the Liberty Police Department. I'm not going to comment on a lot of the same topics that Sam and Barry, I've heard, talked about, a lot of the same concerns that North Liberty Police Department has. The only thing that could be a little bit different is we have a little further drive time than some of the other jurisdictions because we're a little bit further north. As the community grows and town grows, I can just see that being an increased drive time for the officers, just from going to the jail or dropping some of the officers. It was a 20-minute one-way drive just for us from our city down to the jail, depending on what facility you're actually using, you're taking them to jail and of course, drive time and the weekend. For that, again, as the city will grow, I don't know what the stats are, I don't have those numbers of the population coming in, you know, I don't know if people are moving to Johnson County, I don't even guess that people coming from outside of Johnson County who moved to this area will put that increase in the population and increase the demands on our services as well as other governmental services beneath their needs for the governance. I'll ask, do you have any questions that you might have on my perspective on the jail and courthouse?
Yes. You know, we could put this in one tree too. And so, some people say central location makes it fair for everyone. Other people say, no, separate the facilities, don't separate the facilities. Do you have any thoughts on this?
I have some thoughts on it, but I think the main thing that, you know, it seems like we're losing a little bit is that we need the facilities. So, people keep asking me, you know, we need uniforms, we need this, we need that, but we do need it. So, are we going to wait because of their fact thought? Are we going to separate or are we going to keep it together? Of course, just as I was said before, keeping the facilities together, I think is more beneficial down the road for cop services and the sharing of security in those services that they, we share now. Separating out, you know, law enforcement, we adapt, we'll get into it and we'll, we'll make it work because we don't have any choice in that.
Questions for Diane? Comments? Drive more out of her?
Just congrats on the new job.
Thank you.
You've had the official title for how many days now?
A few weeks now.
A week. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Thank you. Tom, Marcus, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
You were hesitating to talk, but I actually have a question.
Really?
I've been in a lot of the Southside planning meetings, give or take, even before you could consider being there. I've had a lot of conversations with the city about whatever facilities we may or may not build. What is your perspective on whether or not having jail and courthouse in the downtown area is negative or a positive? Where should we? Do you have any thoughts on that? I know that your bosses-
I think it's in downtown.
Okay. You want to say why or?
Well, it's the county seat. I think it's traditional. It actually improves our drive down.
If you talk about, it's one of the issues that I heard five years ago when we were talking about this was that the economic impact of having courthouse pretty close to downtown, really wants you to, now with your new plan, I guess you can say it is part of downtown, south of Burlington. But that it was very important to the city to have the economic impact of all the attorney's offices and whatnot that are downtown and that moving the courthouse out would probably cause those offices to follow and that that would be a sort of a blow to downtown. Would you agree with that or?
I'd absolutely agree. I think it's very accurate.
I don't remember exactly who told me that, but it, it sounds like economic development folks agreed that that was-
Yeah, I think that there is a companion office potential as we move into the riverfront crossings area that can expand and will expand as you see that area redeveloped. It's already being talked about, I think it's already being planned for.
Yeah, a question you may not want to answer. Looking at the type of question, if you were in fact considered in police department, would there be any thought that if I had the jail and chairs department in the same facility, where you actually have your own facility, could you attach it and basically operate out of the same company?
Yes.
I should ask the council.
No, I actually think that's, I think that has a lot of merit and I think the law provides for that. You could actually do an authority to that effect and accomplish that. And I'll say this in front of Jim and everybody else here, but we have had that discussion internally amongst staff. I think there's general support for that kind of concept.
Thanks, Tom, for letting me put those aside. I've heard from people that they say that, that having a jail and courthouse in the Southside area is a detriment to the city's plans and for riverfront crossings. And I just, I just wanted to know from you whether you think that's true or not. Be answered the question a couple of different ways, but I, I just, I think that is important for people to know that from everybody I've ever talked to, from the downtown business association to the chamber, to the city, that they have absolutely no problems with having this facility in the downtown Southside development area.
I don't think really, I think just the opposite, I think we support having it there. It's employment center. We want employees in employment downtown in the companion offices and residential.
One of the, thank you, one of the issues that has come up quite a bit is regards to parking. That parking is an issue and there had been some vision about the next parking ramp, can we join in, if you will, or if there's not really to be so close to the area that we could potentially trade off parking for some of the folks at the federal post office and that kind of thing. And is that still, is that still possible?
Yes, that is possible. When we're talking about tariff money, that's always possible. We have a couple of decks planned right now for that area and I think you can see one come out of the ground within potentially the next 18 months. It's a Midwest state project that's proceeding right now.
So where is that one? Is that the old segment?
It's the old school.
It's going to have parking under it or near it?
It's going to have a deck surrounded by town.
All hypothetical. Getting better.
It's a little beyond hypothetical at this point. The land's transferred and so I think that's why, that's why.
In the past, Iowa City has indicated that they would have no problem vacating Harrison, that little brick part. Actually, your streets person was like, can you vacate it tomorrow? I need the bricks because you have other bricks. Nothing's changed on that, that we don't know about that, Esther.
You know, I have been a part of that conversation. I would say, you know, we probably want to look at it again. I, you know, I have been through that discussion, so. That's the street that we took.
Yeah.
It's just a little street there, the side of courthouse. South side of courthouse. I was told, can we vacate it sooner? We need the bricks. I guess those are good bricks for the rest of your roads.
I have a question. Do you, have you considered joint authority? You know what I mean?
Scott County knows that. And I had the, I, I inherited chair of facilities and funding for the Justice Center, so I did all the research on that with some support, brought it forward, forward to the CJCC, Criminal Justice Coordinating Committee. And that would have been like three years ago, three and a half years ago. At that time, Iowa City's plans weren't progressing. You're not clear where you had and, I mean, there's always, not for me, but from others, a hesitation on some sort of joint facility. There's complications because of our funding stream is county-wide and the city's is not and, and how that would work and everything. I'll just say from my perspective, I am always open to consolidation. I just think that people are confused by government in general, they don't, they don't actually know if they're dealing, I know this sounds terrible to a room full of local people, but oftentimes people don't know if they're dealing with the city or the county either one. I mean, they just have, I was told to come to this building and so they walked into our building sometime in administration and they needed to be at city hall. And so, I did from a public perspective, some sort of joint facility. I had always been told you had to move out your police department or your fire department, one or the other. And, and something had to get there. And, and so there was some talk way back about, is your fire department combined with the ambulance service and move that out or your police department? It's never been something that concerned me that much. I always thought that could be worked out. The financing of it can be worked out, I mean, everything can be worked out, but I just think there hadn't been that much interest in it, but that is exactly how Scott County did it.
Right. Yeah, there's, there's a reason why I asked chief party about police department and knew the answer. And, and we have talked about joint authority in the past. And I think some of the reservation really was, at the time, was muddying of the water. You know, let's identify what the need of the county is and let's move forward. And now that we're kind of, kind of throw the cards back up in the air and saying, let's potentially start over with this whole deal, do we not entertain the idea? Obviously, folks don't know about joint authority. It does change the level in regards to bonded, bonding and passage of such. So, so that does kind of change things a bit. My hunch is, the other thing that was brought up about muddying of the waters is that are there other community needs out there related to public safety and public response for, for law enforcement and such? Do other communities have a need too? And then, now do we have other communities? Now we have none of them. And maybe that's what we do, but everything's up in the air right now and needs to be on the table too.
Yeah, I think that's the right approach. I think it has to be on the table. I think it's just one more thing that if we're going to continue this dialogue, we need to keep that as, as an option. I just want you to know, we have to discount that, we have to look at that from a consideration.
You know, I've always been there as in the joint authority myself. And the issue is, is how do you separate the city police operations from county operations or who pays for what? You know, that's easy to address when you talk about who pays for the roof part of the building or who actually pays for your electrical and all that. It's easy to separate, either that's anywhere with a law or an electric, how they can work through to making sure the site can still manage the operations, who runs the city park, who runs the county?
Yeah, I think that those laws can be parsed out to the point where, you know, that you can get both parties, they both part, ultimately have to sign an agreement to that effect, so.
That's why we both have law firms.
And several comments I've received about that idea, what was core, what was North Liberty and what they think of police department, you can like sheriff department, who should pay and run the watch, provide services to Iowa City rather than paying somebody who don't really do what the core would, but they don't pay. I don't see a question.
Yeah, you know, and because they have to go through the public process, I think that those jurisdictions certainly have to be on their way in on that discussion. I would just encourage you to keep that in the mix as we look forward to the next steps.
The other thing, Tom, talking about this conversation, you know, it appears to me that criminals don't know geographical boundaries of work here. And, and so, people can commit crimes in multiple towns in the same spree. And so, I've always kind of been curious if the synergy of the detective bureaus would make a lot of sense. Not that they wouldn't still work for their entities, it wouldn't still have a desk in North Liberty, but that, you know, if you're working in detective and investigations and stuff like that, the synergy of the combined knowledge and stuff makes sense to me. And, and so, how does a facility that's in Iowa City benefit the other entities? And I've always been kind of curious about that. I know in Scott County, the other entities are part of that facility. I mean, they don't have their whole police departments there, but I think they have desks and space and, and, you know, it's worth a tour there. And while it's not on the judge, I just hope you keep in mind that we have to do something about the ambulance and our medical area and you probably have to do something about your fire department, although I'm not clear if you move one or the other out, if you're okay, but our timeframe is ticking on that.
That's another subject. To circle back though, you know, there's a lot of jurisdictions across the country that are 150,000, what's the Johnson County population?
140-ish.
140-ish. A lot of cities, county jurisdictions with one department that serves well over 140,000, so. That's a bigger discussion, you know, we have a number of separate entities. Once you have those entities, you have that kind of allegiance and you get a bit cruel about things. But that's not to suggest that there can't be a more regional combined approach to all sorts of service issues. And I think, I think that there's potential there for some savings as well, so. How, what those services are, Jack, you know, Jack's got kind of a rough patch, but I think he's got-
Not a right path.
You know, I think it's, I think it's gotten to the point now where I think people are feeling a lot more comfortable with it. I think we can get there with some of these other services in this area as well. Do we all use the same court system? Do we all use the same camp system? There's other things that I think we can, we can make efficient for.
Thank you, Tom. Any comments for Tom or questions? Question? Anyone else? We should do, a lot of people with microphones on their shoulders, law enforcement. We're happy to hear from any publicans who either would like to speak to us. I can shave someone else in or we can save the minutes or not. So I don't see anyone really moving.
No, we, the one thing that I think, a couple of things to move on is, there's still opportunity to participate, you know, by going to our website, johnson-county.com. We're soliciting ideas and we certainly would appreciate if we're just in that listening mode right now. The other thing is, we have had a difficult time getting, I would say, some buy-in from the communities in regards to participating with the Criminal Justice Coordinating Committee. And if, even if it's not as far as the particular committee, even the subcommittee work, it's been difficult to get a lot of buy-in again, getting from the law enforcement community to, to other counselors to want to join in. I mean, there's facilities, there's the grants and funding, there's the public information and outreach, and then there's jail alternatives. And so, there's kind of some categories that I think that communities, along with just Johnson County, I think can have some, some impact and help us get better perspective of the need and what are some areas in which we think that we can actually improve and deal with safety and space and security of where we go. So, that might be something to take back to your councils and to your other governments as well, and so you can at least get some buy-in at that level as well, if you're sure.
I just wanted to quickly kind of go over our schedule. I mentioned it earlier when we started, but just try one with time. Monday, October 7th at 6 o'clock at the courthouse, courtroom 3A, which is the large courtroom upstairs, is a public input session, so it will be comments from the public. We will be attempting to listen more than talk. We would love to have you, chiefs, city managers, council members, mayors, sit there and listen with us. On the 9th at 4:30, that's Wednesday, October 9th at 4:30 in this room, is the monthly Criminal Justice Coordinating Committee where the committee Terrence just mentioned will come together and, and kind of see where we're going from there. And on October 14th at 1 o'clock in this room, Andy Johnson?
I think so.
At 1:30, sorry, 1:30 in this room is a meeting between the board of supervisors and Janet and Lonnie to discuss all the input sessions, what we've heard, what we think, what's next steps and where we're headed. That is the plan as far as we have now. Probably the 14th will result in other meetings, but at this point, we don't run there. So, last opportunity for any entities, public entities to talk to us. We do have an item because this is just the way the board of supervisors do, does it input from the public. I would just caution you there, or not caution, but say that our intention is to do that next week for as many hours as, as there are individuals who want to speak, one opportunity apiece. So, if there is any pressing input from the public, we'd be glad to receive it or if you were able to hold on until next Monday at 6 o'clock at the courthouse.
My name is John Zimmerman, I'm in my last semester at the law school, previously was a pastor, now I'm a closing. Just, so I, I, just a couple of things. One is on the, the population of the jail. So, I clicked through the jail roster website last night and there, what I came up with was, I didn't include people who had just been arrested, were just there overnight, was 122 people in jail. 16 were serving sentences. Seven of those were nonviolent crimes, either stealing or, robbery I counted as a violent crime, seven of 16 for nonviolent crimes. Eighty-seven percent of people in jail right now, which is 106 people, are there pre-trial, which means they have not been convicted, they've been charged, but they cannot afford to post bond. Forty-two of those people have bonds of $10,000 or less, which means that probably if it was you or I or someone in our family, we would not let them just sit in jail for the lack of $10,000. Of the people with $10,000 or less, 13 are there for theft or burglary, five for drug crimes, four for alcohol crimes. There are 64 people in the jail with a waiting trial, who've only been charged, who have not had their day at court, have not been able to challenge their charges. Thirty-seven are there for violent crimes, 18 for stealing and seven for drugs. So that means that of the current pre-trial population of the jail, 29%, 31 people are there for stealing, 16 for drugs and alcohol, and then there are some people there for O W laws. So just to say that the vast majority of the people in the jail have not been convicted of anything. They're there because they've been charged and they can't afford to bond them. The typical pattern is after you're there for a while, the county attorney contacts your lawyer or there's a discussion and it's, well, you can either stay and fight your charges and be in jail another month or so, or you can plead guilty now and get out for time soon. So, you know, we can debate a lot about the racial component, but no one involved in the criminal justice system can deny that economic class ties the system. The vast majority of the people in jail are poor and grew up poor. Some, a few of them are innocent, some of them maybe are guilty, but the state couldn't convince a jury of it if it went to trial. But almost all are poor and grew up poor, most have been treated like crap their whole lives. And I think a lot of the opposition to the jail comes from people who either have been in that situation or have known legal in that situation. It doesn't feel like justice and it isn't justice. So, if you want, I have a handout of the breakdown that I had you guys with for last night, but you can see that there are, you know, 31 people in the jail who are stealing, 16 for drugs and alcohol, 47 people total. So if you want to reduce the jail population, one option would be for these nonviolent people who have not been convicted of anything would be to release them or the county attorney's office to oppose bond for these folks. So, I have a lot of other ideas on reducing the incarceration. The other thing just to throw in is on the, the jail itself, another way, because I think there is a jail, current jail is not a good place for people to be. I, as, when I was a pastor, I visited people in prisons a lot. And the state prison system actually has a lot nicer facilities than the jail. If you visit someone in the prison, it's like an elementary school cafeteria. You sit there, there's places for kids to play, pop machines, you can talk for an hour. You know, in the jail, you have 20 minutes to talk to them through, put them on a phone. And I think the new proposal had big, because I don't remember right from what I saw. And so, keep in mind here that the vast, over 80% of the people have not been convicted of anything, yet it's much more punitive incarceration. Also, in the state prison system, they're almost, they're never in the middle of town, they're in places where there's outdoor space. So people can get outside, you know, get some fresh air, there's places to exercise, gyms in the winter. And so, you know, it does seem sort of strange that people who have been convicted horrible, say rape and murder, have much less punitive incarceration than people who are sitting in the county jail pre-trial because they can't post $10,000 bond. And so, for those reasons, I, I think it would be a much better idea, a much better selling point to put the jail outside of downtown because the, the state prisons are like campuses, you know, there are several buildings, it'd be easy to expand and also there's fresh air and so space is not the tight issue, you know, for key maintenance purposes, that kind of facility. Like, model on how the state prisons are set up would be, you know, a much, much more humane than instead of just a box to house people and having them that are convicted and are there because they can't bond out. So, put those ideas out there on, I mean, if there's interest in actually kind of moving the line from where it has been, the division among the voters, to where people like, oh, this would actually be a better, a better thing for folks who have proposed it. And I think those are two areas, pre-trial incarceration, especially of people who have low bond, they can't afford it, and are nonviolent, and a jail that is actually humane instead of just a box to house people who have not even been-
John, you referred to some paper that-
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Can you leave a copy?
Okay, I'll make a copy. I happen to make my own copies.
Okay, thank you.
John, did you separate those out by burglary, is there just theft or?
I combined, I combined theft and burglary. So burglary is breaking, like a breaking thing, so you're like breaking into a car into a house to steal something, as opposed to that-
Sometimes I read about it in a paper, in recent work, in the column.
Right, so that's where it works. Yeah, so if you, I didn't, I combined those and stealing for these purposes. Because, and then robbery is under violent crimes because robbery is actually violent. That's a good, you know, threat.
I understand the ideal of building something outside, in downtown, in more space for recreation or getting out back here, and they have them ready to cause some stuff to happen in the service.
Yeah, and so I-
The ideal behind that was that we were in the middle of a year within the county jail and you went to prison, that's not necessarily the case.
Right, almost everybody there is not serving sentence, they're just sitting there waiting for the chance to, you know, have a safe proof of case.
Thank you very much, John. The public input session is next Monday at 6 o'clock. Any other comments from the public this time?
Bob Thompson, I think I did that real quick, something relevant to today's meeting. I spent quite a bit of time talking to- I spent quite a bit of time talking with John now, and since we have police chiefs here today, this is relatively, can't understand why, since the police departments are such a big part of the criminal justice system, why they lack representation on the criminal justice coordinating committee. We both agree that that was kind of a impediment to, well, coordinating the system, and if there's a compelling reason why they should not be asked to that table, I'd like to hear it.
No, Bob, I think that, I can't remember if it was Terrence or Rob, but someone here, Terrence actually asked for that. I mean, it's, it's not for a lack of closed door that different entities...
Yeah.
Thank you all, I'll get back to work. It's not for a lack of, we would love to have them on committees and on...
Yeah, I wouldn't be surprised if anybody remembers why it wasn't set up that way.
Well, I think we've made the, we've made the request multiple times in writing, and I just assume they decided they're busy people and they can't make it, but it's unfortunate.
But it'd be a valuable perspective.
We're not committed to the committee structure we have now. I mean, that would be part of the conversation in the next few weeks or month, about whether we throw that committee out and start all over, or we bring in new members. I mean, we have some people, Connie Champion's been on there since Dirt, you know, we were no longer at Glacier, and we saw Dirt on this in Iowa.
You know, it's coming back, she's good here with her stuff.
Yeah, that's right. Like, you know, Connie's term will be coming to an end on criminal justice coordinating committee as she retires off. And so she was not just joking with Jim, she told me that Jim was our candidate, so she's spreading that rumor, Jim. So I, I think that our committee, like CJCC, is not set right now. We have to survey who's continue wants to serve, and whether that's the format we have or we mix it up. So I, I think you're absolutely right, we'd love to have the cities or the chiefs more involved. Thank you.
Also, Alvin too, it's like a former public defender, Klausner used to always be a member, but he came regularly, and we haven't had...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, the former head of the public defender's office, Klausner used to come regularly every month. We really appreciate having that input, and he has, since he retired, there has been really minimal representation from the public defender's office, even though they've been invited. So I think more input from all those entities would be appreciated.
My name is Bob Ralph. Please allow me to speak now rather than along our October seventh, because I've got many other meetings coming on that night. One, thank you for this meeting, thank the law enforcement officers for coming. I regret that no one from the University of Iowa is here, because I think they are on the gorillas in the group. Four brief comments. One, I hope you will follow Jim Farkman's suggestion about convening a group to work at best proportions. I think he is right, that until that issue is solved, in a referendum, we'll go down in defeat. Second is, I was glad to hear the statement, we minimized the number taken to jail. I think it would be helpful if the law enforcement groups, including the University of Iowa, made a statement concerning what their process is, whether or not they all in fact do minimize the number, what are their priorities, because I think we all know that we cannot arrest everybody that commits a crime. When I speak, I'm glad for that. Number three, I appreciate the statement about the regional approach, and hope you will consider that. And fourth, as you proceed, I hope you be open to other designs. My own suggestion would be that there are a lot of architectural firms in this community, in surrounding communities, and I would suggest that you consider giving to the really large fact of, hey, these are spaces that we have, these are depths that we have, what creative ways you have addressing this and facing that in various stages.
Thank you, Bob. Four questions next week.
I just want to, I, when we, just so you know, when we did select the architects, there were several, I mean, they got, they brought in four or five finalists, as I recall. And so, actually, we told them, this is our problem, and come in with some concepts, and surprisingly, all five had somewhat similar concepts to resolve the issue, which was, I find, interesting. So, so, but I don't disagree with it, it, it is a good idea to bring, there's not just one, one way to do it, so.
Because, you know, here again, I can send myself a friend if you all are of the kind. Another thing that I heard against the proposal, because they did not like the design.
Of the first one, or the second one, or both?
I repose on them.
But the officer's design is not that much...
Thank you, Bob. And I guess I would beg to differ with Janelle a little bit. I know that this is designed for, for public entities to give input, but I don't, I understand there's plenty of people here that may have input that, that I would like to hear from myself, whether we have that, we have that upcoming meeting. I don't want to shorten this, or shorten, because people like Bob just that he's not able to make the next one, so. I'd like, if people want to speak, I'd like to hear from them.
Hello, my name's Debbie Brian Taylor, I work at the jail, I've been up for three years. I know Mr. Zimmerman said he has his stats, which I guess I had some disagreement with, I don't know how it became those. As I talked last time, I think there's a misconception on who's in jail. One of the comments about, yours about being like the gorilla in the room, out of the...
Those are not in the room, Brian.
One.
Which is either the gorilla in the room.
I did the same thing that Mr. Zimmerman did. I did my stats for nine twenty-eight, and on nine twenty-eight, there's a hundred and five inmates in pre-trial. Out of those hundred and five, only three were held on university charges. So, while they may have a lot of arrests overnight, you know, they're not, they're not going to be held on bond, per se. And one of the things I just want to address is, I think a lot of people are not bringing up like recidivism. When I do these things, I kind of add some more stats as I go along. Out of these hundred and five people who are awaiting trial, eighty-five have prior arrests. That is huge. I mean, you're talking, the average, out of, out of those eighty-five, the average person has been arrested five point five or times. I mean, that's, that's a problem, and that suits the jail. Only twenty of the hundred and five have never had any kind of, you know, police contact. Forty-three of those hundred and five have four or more, twenty-two of those hundred and five have nine or more arrests. You know, and one of the things I just want to point out, I know Chief Harvey is gone, but, you know, his department, I think, is unfairly treated in the public. When I did this kind of breakdown, I did it even further as a favor to them, and I broke it down just by the city. Out of the hundred and five pre-tribe inmates, overall, fifty-six of them are from Iowa City. Now, while that sounds like a lot, it's fifty-three percent, their severity of their charges are high. If, out of fifty-six pre-tribe inmates, forty-seven had felony charges, that's eighty-four percent. Seven are aggravated misdemeanors. So if you combine aggravated misdemeanors with felony charges, that's fifty-four of the fifty-six people that Iowa City arrests. One of the drug offenses, so you hear a lot about Iowa City disarresting, you know, people on possession charges, they have two drug offense charges in jail. You know, this is on nine, nine twenty-eight, so Saturday, could have changed by double by night, but I, I stayed by this. There was two drug offenses, they were both for non-male law. You talked at manufacturing of meth and cocaine. So, you know, like I said, I think that, another thing that gets kind of brushed on the rug, is a lot of arrests are due to the officer being sent to a location. So it's a third party, either, you know, passerby, or victim, calling police for help. We go to the location, investigation ensues, the arrest is made. Out of all the arrests, these are for Iowa City anyway, out of their fifty-six pre-tribe inmates, forty-three were dispatched to the scene. So, and only ten, ten were officer-injured, and the rest were department corrections, you know, parole, violation, something like that. So, I mean, you know, if someone calls the police, we have to go, we cannot, you know, indulge, nor did. So, I mean, that's where the majority of arrests are coming from, is that, you know, the police get called, they do their investigation, and so on. You know, I, I don't know, you know, I, obviously the bond passed twice. I, I think that a lot of it wasn't designed, it was who's in jail. A lot of people take issue with who's in jail, why they're there, you know, nonviolent Like I said, when I did this, there was a hundred and five pre-tribe inmates, seventy-nine of those are felony charges. If you add aggravated misdemeanors, that's ninety-three, that's eighty percent of our jail population is aggravated above. So, I mean, I guess you can debate whether or not an aggravated misdemeanor is nonviolent. You know, like, I, I don't know. Nothing I want to point out about City is, they have all the murder charges in Johnson County. All five of our murder, or attempted murder, or murder charges are, are City. Now, they have twenty-three robbery and burglaries, five weapons offenses, six domestic charges, two OWI homies, one's an OWI third, and the other one is, the other one has just been amended to B felony, or B or homicide. So, I mean, I think, you know, their charges are, are justified. You know, I think, and I think that's where people have issues with who's in jail, is we don't do enough to, like, get down to the public, explain who's in jail and why. I think we need to do better than that. Otherwise, I mean, I, I'm under the impression that, that, you know, we are going to see a jail anytime soon, and I think there's a lot of people who are against any kind of incarceration or, or, you know, or, you know, there's a saying in society, if you're breaking the law, like I pointed out, eighty-five to a hundred and five have prior, you know, records, and the average of those is five point five or four. So you're dealing with people who keep continually breaking the rules. There has to be some kind of passageway to, you know, cut down recidivism. You can't just let people out who are going to keep continually breaking the law. One of the things that, that we do is, every morning when someone's arrested and they need criteria, the department corrections interviews them, to see if they're worthy of getting released, and they need recommendations to the judge, you know, based on interview. So, I mean, I, I think we try and get people out as many on jails as we possibly can, but, you know, obviously, you know, there are bad people in this county doing bad things, so I think that gets kind of lost. But, you know, I, I think it'd be a mistake to kind of gloss over the fact that, even though there's a lot of arrests, that there's people who are in jail who aren't committing dangerous crimes. I mean, people who commit the low-level offenses get out of jail. And I think as a testament by Iowa City's charges, where, you know, fifty-five of fifty-six are, you know, either aggravated or felony, I mean, that says it right there. So, I think, you know, and, and just to break down further for, for City, City is prior, but the, the people that City comes in contact, is in contact with, out of those fifty-six people, only eleven had no, no crimes, forty-five had prior arrests, and their average of those forty-five people that City came in contact with was six point two. So the average person that has the arrest that is held after court has, has been arrested six point two times. And like I pointed out, more often than not, the officer is dispatched to that person, they're not just, you know, someone that, you know, happens hands upon them. So I, I think, you know, it's, I mean, you, we can debate like what, what the building should look like, how many fences should have, things like that, but I think that, you know, until we, you know, address who's in jail, why they're there, and do they need to be, things like that, you know, you're, we're not going to see you in jail, that's just one thing. I mean, I, it's failed twice, I just think it's not the passing, you know. I'd like it to, because it's, it's, you know, I work there, and I see additions, I mean, you know, it's not going to be a time hall, it's not going to be, you know, it is what it is, it's a government building, but, you know, it's, something's going to happen where the jails probably even shut down, maybe, you know, by the jail inspector. Because, you know, it was, it's originally designed for forty-three people, and it has three holding cells, for a total of forty-six people. Around nineteen ninety, we doubled up to ninety-two people, but the actual building itself is still serviced for forty-six people. Around two thousand, two thousand and one, we started shifting them into something else. Now, all that was done voluntarily, you know, that's all mandated, but, you know, it's not like we just decided, oh, let's, let's do this on our own. And I'm sure Sheriff can correct me if I'm wrong, we had started shifting people out of county, because Johnson County at one point in time, let the state on inmate, on inmate corrections, is that correct?
True. Assault on inmates and inmates have staff.
So you're, you're looking at, everything that we've done to put a bandaid on this has been, you know, pretty much about as good as far as we can go. You know, like I said, you can debate who, who should be arrested or not, but, and you can pick about, you know, what offenses are in jail, and is this a violent offense, is this not violent? You know, the thing that, one of the things that strikes me is that, you know, like a socioeconomic background, I've never run a credit check, you know, before the arrest, so I mean, what does that have to do with how they got arrested? I don't, I mean, to me, to me, that's like a, you know, you...